Call the meeting of the Planning Board to order a roll call. Brian Fry.
President.
Peter Morton.
Here.
Gilbert, myself, here.
Bruce Allen, please, here.
Gordon Brewster, here.
And Sarah Creighton is not here, and hopefully we're waiting for Sandy Bauden to return. Before we go through the agenda, I want to give Kendall a chance to introduce herself. Kendall, do you want to introduce yourself to the board?
Hi, I'm Kendall. I'll be helping with the Planning Board's zoning, history, and conservation boards.
Thank you, welcome to Manchester.
Thank you.
He needs this way.
You OK, Gordon?
Yeah, I just can't get in because I have to email it.
All right. I see the...
Hi.
Great. So I have lost my copy of the agenda.
Oh, I have.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce Allen.
Thank you.
You've got a meeting on the agenda.
Gordon, do you mind if I just keep going? That's OK. So we were going to start out with public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any? Correspondence. I believe we, Mark posted correspondence from the town of Wenham, town of Gloucester, and there was an email from Adam Zager to Sarah Creighton that she distributed to everyone, and then comments from Kathy McCabe. Any other correspondence, Mark, other than Wenham and Gloucester?
No, just a budding cities and towns on what's their claim, which doesn't affect Manchester, so that's why they send them in case something does.
Right. So we might as well go right into downtown zoning. We have a web page up and running on the town website. It's accessed by going into land use through, it's either departments or government, and then you pick land use, and then you go to Planning Board, and then you'll see downtown zoning update. And that will be the landing spot for our work as we move through this. And right now, our most recent draft of our possible map is up there, and Tiffany has listed upcoming events, including our forum on November 8th, our next, the town walkthrough on November 8th, and then a possible forum on the 20th of November. And we're hoping to get the FAQs up, our current draft, maybe in the next week or so.
That's very nice.
And Tiffany is the keeper of the page, so if there's something that you think should be up there, we all need to talk about it, and then she's the one who will put it up. OK, the first thing is the name of the districts. On our draft map, we have Town Center and Harbor District, but I think Harbor District people aren't 100% behind, so do people have any other ideas for names?
Well, I mean, I think the name kind of depends on the boundaries of the district, which have moved around a bit. And if I'm remembering correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, we did extend the District B across Beach Street to encompass the hardware store and...
Which is shown on the map, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have that one. Yeah, OK. And the question, I have a question still. I've been thinking a lot about Peter's comment from the last time we met about clarity. Because every time we start to explain why are there two districts, how are they different, you know, we get a little tangled up, I think, in the explanation. And I think one possible explanation that's simple is that, for the most part, District A is in the general district currently, and District B is in the A district. And I am inclined to also ask the group to reconsider including the section that goes to Tappan, because I think it's ambitious, it's across from public spaces, the harbor and the park. And if you actually, something, I think a harbor name is not inappropriate given where the district now goes, and particularly if we include those houses.
So Sandy, your thought is to extend it to include Captain Dusty's?
Yes.
And then the homes on the other side of Captain Dusty's, right?
Yes.
But not down Tappan Street, right?
Oh, no, not at all. I think those homes, it was very interesting when we were doing the walk, because people were telling me stories about how, well, there was the Nahada's Salad Master business there, as well as Dusty's, and there had once been an inn of some sort. And, you know, it's looking out at the harbor, it's very different than other more just residential spaces, because it faces Masconomo Park, it faces the harbor. So, you know, I think, particularly since we're trying to prepare something for people to react to right now, I mean, it's not like we're right up against a town meeting deadline, it would be interesting to hear people's reactions and feedback about it. I think we need to, I don't know, if we don't propose it, no one will, right?
Well, one concern I have is that it is a residential neighborhood there on Tappan, and that's sort of a corner of the residential neighborhood.
It is, but it's partly commercial still in terms of its uses, and what's across the street is certainly not residential. And the whole big harbor point is, of course, backs up against that neighborhood, so, anyway. Initially, I thought maybe what we should do is just say, north of the railroad tracks is the town center, south of the railroad track, or beach, toward the beach side is...
Can we do this up on the screen so others and us can actually understand what you're...
Oh, sure. I don't have a computer, so I can't do that.
Can you share?
Let's see.
As we go.
I think I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure.
I just had a request. Is that my last? Yeah, I'll share if you want.
So this is a discussion of the name of the districts? We're not re-drawing the district?
Well, I may ask, because I think what you call the district has to do with where it is.
Well, the ones I saw in the FAQ, you had two distinct names. Well, I forget what it was, waterfront and...
So you can see the map right there. That's the draft harbor issue.
Right. And what I was suggesting is...
Remember, don't touch the screen.
Thank you. Appreciate the warning. Was just originally, one of the original plans had things coming down here. And then you can talk about this district, it really does border the harbor for the most part, and you might want to contrast.
But what are you suggesting they do then?
I'm suggesting that we think about the district as more of a harbor district in part by adding that to it.
And you can see that the back of all those property lines is pretty...
So Sue, I'm following your cursor here, or some of these cursor.
Yeah, that's made.
Peter, Peter. Thank you.
Those are the back property lines of all the parks.
Yep.
Front, beach.
So it's a pretty clear strip.
I know where you're going.
Right along Beach Street.
I think at the last meeting, we discussed removing those specifically because only one real business is on the commercial that, and to remove any opposition from perhaps that street there that we talked about, you know, if our downtown becomes really vital and we need to look at branding it up certain streets, then that's what you do at a future point, and...
Yeah, I understand. I'm just thinking, since we're still a little bit early in the process, now might be the...
Not that early.
Well, now might be the moment to test it and to see people's reaction. Because I do, I think, Mark, had we not had the walk-around, and had I not heard people talk about, you know, how that area had been used previously, because I would think about it more as purely residential, but it historically hasn't been, and it is in a place, I think one of the comments I hear from some friends in town is, where can I go and have a Gloucester roll and look at a park? Where's the restaurant that's there? And we, there isn't any place, and that's kind of the only place. So, I mean, it's a prime place for commercial use, in a way, in terms of related to water or related to the sports fields. Anyway, I wanted to bring it up and raise the issue once again, and I apologize for doing this after there was sort of a decision about it, but the more I thought about it, the more I thought, oh, and actually, I was almost inclined to say, north of this is one district. Anyway.
So I have one thought about this, which is, one of the distinctions between these two districts is the parking requirement for both of them. Since we're sort of, the parking is less stringent, or less required in the downtown blue district, whereas the red district would require parking according to the zoning code, which is pretty onerous, we can talk about later, but, so I just think that's something to consider.
I mean, it is something you can always bring up, too. I mean, how do others feel about it?
So I, in thinking about it, why I might agree with it has everything to do with the name of the district, if we're going to use harbor, and I don't think that's the best reason to do it. And I do remember that when we were trying to come up with clear ways to define each district, that the definition, the description of the harbor district was because of the parking that Chris just referred. And I, we'd have to go back to the drawing board about those definitions, too, if we did include that. And I also do think that this is an iterative, iterative, you know that word?
Yes.
Process, so there will be time, and maybe when we do the forum, somebody brings that up, and we just see if that comes up in that forum or not.
Well, the one thing that that district, that B district shares is the railroad line.
Yeah.
And maybe, Troubled Railroad District sounds a little...
I know.
I was thinking maybe the Crossing District, would that be something?
You know, I think, Brian, you used the word edge at one point.
I was thinking Harbor's Edge District is something that might, you know, connect a little more with that, the way it's drawn right now.
That's what some of the draft...
Yeah, it's Harbor's Edge.
It says Harbor District.
In the draft of the zoning for 27, it uses Harbor's Edge.
I did not redraw that map since again.
Oh, good, OK. So what a great idea.
Yeah. But it's in the text.
I don't know, I think the, I think that the properties distinctly different to Chris's point, particularly about the parking and the, and the commercial size of spaces on the, I'll call it the red zone for fear of violating something, but the red zone is larger, more commercial, definitely more commercial space, they have their own parking off-street all the way, whereas everything else, everything else is all downtown center, parking on the street, find a space where you can, versus parking definitely at the commercial place you're going to.
I also have a potential concern with just some of the properties in that little sliver there in the use maps that we did, because if we're looking at...
Which sliver are you talking about?
Those properties, right?
Right there.
Yep, right there. And the use map, when we say mixed use with First Floor Residential being right now under the Harbor's Edge District, then no. I feel like some of those properties, some of those houses, that might get a little bit tricky there, because those might want, you know, they might want to be mixed use, but they might be more suited to First Floor Residential and taking that.
What's the conclusion?
I don't know if it would fit within our currently defined table of uses for those, you know, if we're trying to tidy that up with the, what we currently have with mixed use on First Floor Residential, I don't know if those would quite fit in that.
Is there any reason we couldn't include those as blue street properties?
Well, that was the original map, I mean.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I think it was just aesthetics. Seriously, I think that's part of it, was just, we want a piece of blue hanging out on the other side of the red.
I do think that's what happened to it.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
We don't have that connectivity requirement, but...
But which isn't the end of the world, let me get right down to it.
Should we bring this up at a forum and just see?
Yes, I think that's a, I think that's a great way to deal with it, Chris, because I think, if in fact what was across the street were other residential properties, I would feel differently. But because it's such a part of the park and the harbor, you know, I think we need to think about whether we want to include it or not.
Are we good with this map?
I know, just a second. Would you mind, can you blow it up? Can you make it larger in that particular area?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, I would have...
Are you stretching your technical skills?
Yes.
Yeah, I have some questions, some further questions. I want to hear yours, Gordon.
Not sure how to do that.
There it is, Mark's got it right here. If you're really, if we're really going to, I like we're blowing this up in a whole different way, would it be just simpler just to make the, everything on the south side currently on the map as the district, because it is such a large, commercial self-parking area, everything above it is blue? Sarah's hearing isn't going to kill us now.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, it seems to me to be a simple explanation, because you've got stuff...
That's what we were before last meeting, I think we had that, that we changed.
Wait, what, I don't understand what you're suggesting.
Everything north of the river.
So if I look at this map, you know, if I look at this map, Sue, that's, that's the line, everything above there is blue, this is kind of what Sandy said, and everything below there is red.
Above the tracks?
So the tracks are the dividing line between zones. You're just marking it distinctly as the large commercial area with its office and retail, and then...
And smaller, older.
... component is to zone, distinct zoning, and the other ones are the other one.
Well, my problem with that is the Crosby's space.
You do have the, you have Camargo, I think you do.
I think so.
You have the park, yeah.
Someone needs to meet themselves, someone out in Zooland.
By the way, Sue, I'm not suggesting this, I just need some clarity.
Good job.
OK, so I think part of the reason, and I think a good reason, not have the tracks be the dividing line, is the location of Crosby's and the spaces adjoining Crosby's with the bank and the dry cleaner, and then on the other side of Beach, the little strip mall, where the other bank is, Travel Agency and that, and then we've got the hardware store with the big parking lot and the restaurant there. So I think there are some bigger properties on the other side of the tracks that belong more in a practical sense with the harbor point button.
Well, except the scale of them is more like the scale of the rest of downtown. The scale of where the gallery is and 35 Beach, and the scale of the post office, and the scale of the little strip mall there is much more like the scale of the rest of the so-called town center, and whereas South is this, I mean, big, new, for the most part, building, set of buildings.
And then how does Crosby's fit into that, do you think?
I don't know. I mean, in the original map that we discussed, Crosby's was the only property, Crosby's itself was the only property that was included that was north of the track. Everything else that was north of the tracks was in the blue zone.
What are the implications of doing what you're suggesting? How does it affect the properties that we originally had in one side, now will be on the other?
Well, I think the zoning for the B district is more restrictive. There is, there is no mixed use.
Actually, more restrictive.
No, it's actually the opposite.
I thought the District A had mixed use permitted as a right. Is that correct?
They will, too, but the thing is that they would be able to expand the buildings without providing any parking except for any residential on any of the properties, those properties.
That's in District A, Mark?
That's B.
That's B.
That's in the blue district.
Yeah, that's in District A.
So they would be able to, yeah, to probably reduce parking and increase density, and so what came out of, I guess, the discussion the last couple meetings, when I changed this, was that, Gordon felt that loss of that extra parking, and the increased density may be too much for that section of downtown, because those properties already provide enough parking for the business, so the idea was, let's put them in the red zone instead of the blue zone, where if I, they'd be required to retain most of their parking for business. So that was, they'd still be able to do mixed use, they'll be able to add some residential.
They'd have to add more parking, right?
Well, they'd have to comply with the existing parking requirement.
Well, I feel like maybe this is something we need to vote on, and I would want to do that with Sarah present.
Yes, for sure.
But we have a forum coming up before our next meeting. I mean, we have the Saturday, November 8th walk, and so to walk the districts...
We need to have them identified.
Yeah, we do.
So what's on the table right now? What are we, what Gordon was just proposing?
Oh, no, no, no. I heard what he was proposing. I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to get clarity, understanding, because I can see how a person in town, walking through this thing, and you draw this kind of a crooked line, goes over this way, that side is in one zone, this is literally on the side of the street, and the other side is in a different zone, versus the rail line makes it completely crystal clear as to the use of this thing. Does that make a difference, though? Does it make a difference?
Well, it does in terms of what the underlying current zoning is.
I think you have to think about what the property should be, not what they, not what the zone looks like.
Well...
You don't want to draw a zone that just is a perfect rectangle just because it looks pretty, you know?
You're following property lines, and you're following uses, and you have to, you know, you're zoning for the future, so what do you want to see here? So, I mean, if you want, you know, some of those properties to be significantly denser than what they are today, then you could shift them into blue, but the blue is closest to the municipal parking, there's a lot of street parking there, and so that's why the red, which provides mostly parking for itself today, for their customers, and they, you have a lot of the bigger businesses in that little area, which is why the red was expanded from just being the two parcels to include several of the others. So, I mean, so you have to think about how you want it to snow, you know, someone may not want to do something for five years after this change, if you made it blue, but then you might get a property that all of a sudden gets redeveloped, and it gets much denser, and some of the parking goes away, even if they maintain First Floor Commercial. Same thing with a few years later, the next one, because remember, you're zoning for the future, so you've got to think about that.
So my tendency is to leave it as is for now, and to proceed to our first walk
with it in place.
With it as it is, but continue to have the discussion. How does the board feel about that?
I feel fine, because the reason why we're having the forum, the forum is to inform the discussion.
Yes.
So, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good, it's a stake in the ground.
Yeah.
And it begins the conversation, and we'll see how, I mean, I really did think about Peter's comment the last meeting about, how do you explain what this is? Why are we doing this? And I think the, what Gordon was suggesting, it's really simple, you know, one side is this, the other side is that, you know, and there, and then you add the other things about parking and the size of parking.
And Gordon, to your point, you can still...
Basically, call it's north and south, right?
This is the Mason-Dixon line.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, when I go downtown, I actually don't think beyond the track.
Really?
I think about, I just go down there, make my turn, then I go to the gull and get the coffee, I go right up, get dressed away, I go home, I go downtown, go to Callis, and it's all there. I just don't go across the tracks to go into that retail center.
No ice cream, no ice cream expansion.
Yeah, what do you do for ice cream?
Where do you get your tools?
Well, if you, if you're going to ask me, I'm going to tell you. If I'm going to go to get ice cream, I'll just go to get ice cream. I'll park it, ask you to go home, go get ice cream.
Yes, there you go, because there's parking there.
I don't think it, in that case, I don't think of the other side of the tracks as a place where I would get that sort of amenity. It's just, it's just, you know, the way, the way people use the town.
Yeah.
It's kind of the way I use the town, too. They come down, they make their turn, they go right out of town, they don't necessarily cross the...
But do you see the railroad track as a barrier?
It's clearly, it's a physical, physical barrier in the sense that not, it's not, you can go past it, of course, but it definitely is. I mean, I think you're, you told me about those MIT students that gave you an idea of recapturing the, recapturing the harbor. If we did that, yeah, I would say there's merit to it, but the way we're currently configured with, I almost called it the Hoopers, no, it's... No, it's Crosby's. With Crosby's right there, that is truly a visual, that, the massing of that blocks everything on the other side of it, so you won't make that turn.
No 6:00 AM Dunkin' traffic?
I don't really dunk it at all.
You're feeling your own habits.
Not anymore.
I don't know how you guys use the town, but that's what I do. I don't actually go, I make that turn to find a parking space. I don't go across the tracks.
I have to cross the tracks to go anywhere.
Yeah, you do, you're right.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry to divert everybody, but I wanted to.
No, no, it's a good discussion. And I think it illustrates why we need to have the walk in the forum so we can get input from, you know, people who live here in addition to the second.
So is part of our attempt to do the forum to say, this is our preliminary notion? Tell us what you think.
What do you think? We want input. We want feedback and input.
Okay. And I think given the way.
Can I say one more thing, Sue, now?
No.
Did you bring the map up, Peter? Peter, did you bring the map up? Yeah, I did that.
Okay. All right, so let's just take a look at Mark. Mark, right here, I remember, I was in front of John and the whole select board, and they asked me why I wanted to be on the planning board.
And what'd you say?
I remember Kathy asked me, if you had to do one thing, what would you do? And I said exactly what I just did say. I'd be coming down School Street, I'd make that turn to the left, and then I'd make the turn down into town, and then I'd make the turn to right. I would take that whole corner with the gas station and Stanley's Garage and the other side with the food stores and those other stores. That would be my enhancement of the town experience. You'd be coming in, you feel it, you enjoy it, you can park, and then you could leave right out the other way. Just one man's thought.
Okay, great.
There's a comment. John Rahm representing himself.
That's okay.
All right, so I haven't been close to this. I did go on the walk a couple of months ago. My impression here is that the red district, that your division is driven by parking.
Parking, yes.
Okay? And that's what you're going to tell the people at the forum. That's the primary driver. People in the red zone have private parking, they've got space to do that. That's not to say that you could not perhaps build other stuff, but I don't know what else is in here. Maybe they can't build other stuff. But you've got to provide parking, whereas in blue, it's kind of every man for himself find where you can park. And that's the primary driver of your reasoning going into this. And, you know, that it's parking.
Yeah, that's half of it. The other half is allowing residential uses above spaces versus.
Okay, we haven't got into that discussion here. I know that's part of it, but.
Yeah, so you could put residential in above any of the red spaces. In the blue spaces, you could actually put some residential away from the street on the first floor, but along the street frontage, you'll be retail.
Oh.
But it's a subtle difference, I mean, that's.
But in the red area, residential can be first floor, right on the street?
Yes.
No, in the red area, no.
In the red area, you'd be retail, commercial retail on the first floor, the entire first floor.
Oh, entire.
And then you could put residential above it.
So.
That's pretty solid.
Yeah, all right. So it's a question of whether residential will be in the front or in the back. It can be in the back.
It could be in the back in the blue district.
But not in the red.
But not in the red. Everything first floor is.
Commercial.
Commercial. Okay. I understand.
All right, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Yes.
Who's your names, okay?
But where are we in names? Harbors Edge and Town Center?
Are people comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, for now.
Okay, dimensional requirement. So we have height as it is now in zoning throughout town except for OCD. And Mark wanted to talk again about the height in the red, the Harbors Edge district.
So I think last time we had a short discussion about the height. And so the whole idea, we heard from several different property owners and local architects, employing the planning board to consider actually increasing the height and allowing three full stories. So the height is currently 35 feet and two and a half stories. So by allowing a third story, they get a full, like, normal living space. The extra, and they were saying you would need a few more feet and.
So 40?
I believe it was, no, I believe it was 38. And that gives them, what is it, a 14-foot first floor, which was what they, they are now building for commercial space height. And then two 12-foot floor plates for the residential above. And that gives them the 38 feet. And then that allows them to build a true three-story building with, you know, and let them have some flexibility on architecture and stuff. So after thinking about it, I think it's a good idea, considering the direction that we're headed in and if you're going to allow, originally, we had considered not allowing any residential in the red district, the Harbors Edge district. But since we are allowing residential, I think it's important to allow maximum flexibility for, and the maximum value for the residential units that are above commercial space. So that's why I think it's important to do that, particularly in the red Harbors Edge.
Do you know how tall Harbor Point is right now?
It's got to be more than 40 feet.
Is it?
I think so. Got a huge roof on it.
Mark, is that height to the top of the living area? Not to the top of the roof, correct? Unless they use a flat roof or a mansard type roof.
Yeah, it would be.
It would be to the top of the living space.
No, 38 feet, no, that's the top of the roof. Top of everything.
The top of the gable right here, not the top of the living space.
And it's 35 feet in zone District A right now?
Yes, throughout town.
So it gives just three feet. Too bad.
No.
Yeah, the only exception are things that are chimneys and little currents.
So the plans we saw for cargo are at 35, right? They have to be, right? Because that's the current restriction.
Yes, unless they're going to request a variance.
Actually, they have requested a variance to do three full floors.
The zoning board has appealed.
Yes, that's correct. And because they have to put the parking behind second floor, the way, because of the elevation of the lot.
Because of the slope of the lot, you're saying?
Yeah, because of the slope of the lot. A good portion of the second floor is going to be where the parking garage is going to be for the unit. So that's why, that's their argument for a variance for that. But they will stay within the 35 feet height.
So they're requesting another half-story, but there's about 35 feet. And that is in November with the zoning board of appeals, November?
November, yes.
18th, something like that?
Yeah, I can talk about that, yes.
It'd be nice to know.
Yeah, 19th or 18th, yes.
Well, it'd be nice to know, it'd be nice to tune into the discussion.
Right.
Yeah. Not just among the BBA, but the public could tune in.
Yes, the 19th.
19th.
Mark, is this because of the style of house they're doing, the mansard-style house?
Uh, no, no. It's because of, in order to, they want to get a full floor of living space on the third floor because a lot of the second floor is being sacrificed.
But the height doesn't increase above 35 feet?
Well, but it's above a particular mark relative to the average grade or something.
Yeah, so it may appear to be more in the front.
Yeah. It shows the average height of grade running.
They show the budding building in the plan. Their original plan had three floors. That was when the garage was on the first floor at the street level. So they had two floors above that that were full, even though the top was a mansard roof that they could work with. Because that first floor as a living space is hard because the only windows you have are on the front. Everything is below grade. So it's very hard to put living space that you're going to live in daily all the time on that floor. But that's something that.
But the view from the street is pretty much the same for this new proposal versus what kind of approval.
But I remember they were up pretty close to 35 feet with their first plan.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
Because they had three floors.
So they were here at 35 feet with the mansard roof?
Yep.
So Mark, would this be a, we were considering the three-foot adjustment. Would that be in both districts?
Um, well, it could be.
Do we know how many buildings right now in both districts exceed 35 feet?
Quite a few.
Yeah, we'd say that's true.
So it's, I mean, the argument could be it's already within the character of the town to some extent.
In fact, there are buildings outside of the G district that are, go along the harbor, there are a lot of.
That are 35, that are.
More than 35? I don't know.
From the water side, go look in there, four and a half stories.
But that's not where you measure.
Well, you measure all the way around. But I bet if you measured all the way around, it'd be more than 40 feet.
The only places I'm aware of that seem that high are where the grade changes pretty dramatically. So on Washington Street, if you look at the backside, no, I mean Washington Street. If you look at the backside of those properties, they're four-story because the grade goes like that. But at street side, they're three-story.
Street side on Union Street, there are four and a half-story buildings.
Ah, yes, the big, the apartment building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So the question in front of us is, do you raise it?
Hey, do you want to consider, and which districts you want to consider in? In both of the downtown districts? I would recommend that you absolutely, I'd say it's important to definitely do it in the Harbors Edge district. And it is also important to do it in the other, but it's because the scale of the buildings are smaller because basically your existing, the existing lots, the existing buildings are already, some of them do exceed the height, but.
Shall we propose it and then see what happens at the forum when we discuss it?
Well. Let's start with one district. I would want to start with one.
Yeah, I mean, personally, but this is just my opinion. I just remember the discussion during MBTA zoning. And it's a different, it's completely different because there we were trying to fit something that we had to fit. Here, this is completely voluntary, so we're discussing all kinds of options. But I do remember most folks who came to the discussions did not like the idea of taller buildings. I mean, it could have just been part of the, I don't like any of this at all. So that's just another thing I don't like. But it does make me nervous in B, looking at, again, taller buildings would be adjacent to the Chapin Street residential.
So would you rather have the extra three feet be in District A?
I'd rather not have.
Have it at all?
But that's just my. But I'll, you know, yeah.
I'm ready, I think I'm ready to suggest, particularly given how tall the existing Harbor Point building is. I think three feet doesn't seem like much, and that's a good way to put it out there and you can see.
For the B.
For the B.
What do other folks think?
I would agree with that because it's open space, you can see the building. The scale will not be downtown, smaller spaces, three feet would look dramatically different. Just one, just one more thing. Mark, you mentioned 14 feet for the first floor?
Yes, that's what was discussed.
That's more of a standard now being built for commercial spaces on the first floor.
Well, I just want to suggest that on a small-scale building, I worked in retail architecture for 10 years. We did mostly retail and not this kind of retail. But the scale of the buildings that are currently being renovated right in downtown, where you can see the first floor is more than the rest of it. I think before we lock on to a number, I suggest we look at both, all of those facilities to get a true scale of what historical reference would be for what that height wants to be. I think 14 feet is too much. That'll look awkward. And then the upper floors will now be inch smaller. I would like to see maybe whatever they are. If they're 12-foot clear inside, disregarding the structure, and then whatever the upper floors would be. I think we ought to look at that first before we come up with a number. Sorry, but.
We're not requiring a 14-foot height, so.
No, we're allowing 38 feet.
Someone's going to build it, maybe.
Well, we're probably not building it.
So it's the whole idea, I've read it a million times, I've read the Hamilton thing. They say the same, they want to maintain the character of their downtown. I think a 14-foot first floor in a buildings like we have of whatever period they were built in would look a bit awkward.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, Gordon, but I don't think that's what we're talking about right now. We're just talking about whether we want to propose three feet total height, right? Not the way you get to it. I think Mark used that as an example.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't mandate that.
Oh, I thought you were.
It's just the total height.
People can build what they want, they just need to.
I'm saying the total height can't be more than 38 feet.
So it goes up to 38?
Yeah, and it could be.
So they could build, they could build three floors with 10 feet each. They don't have to do that and then just have a bigger pitched roof. I mean, it gives some options for architectural design as well, so.
So I think we should absolutely explore it because the argument has been, from the development side, it can create economic vitality. It can make some of these projects viable for us to even look and consider some of this mixed-use housing and do kind of our visioning. So I love the idea of trying to make that work. And I don't think three feet is all that much, considering the character of the buildings that we currently already have, so.
And I would, I agree with you, Brian, but I would add that it would be nice to know how tall Harbor Point is right now. I think we all agree that it's more than 38 feet. But I also remember what you were talking about, the MBTA. One of the biggest negatives that was promoted was the height. And they had that visual with the balloon going up, I remember, and that just wasn't true.
We were talking about four-story buildings.
Yeah, we were talking about.
That was about four stories. And the videos were not accurate, right?
But it was an issue.
Yeah. Yeah. Height is always seems to be an issue, at least in A.
And parking.
Yeah.
Where on a slope is the height measured from? Is that the front edge?
Take the average perimeter of the building.
Which on a slope side gives you a little bit of advantage.
Unless you're in the back.
So let me be sure I understand. So if, for example, the front is zero and the back is 10, then the average height, the beginning height is five feet. So you get five feet plus the 35 feet. Is that correct?
So.
You want to, and you can interpret it, it says, no structure shall be erected or altered so that it exceeds, here it says two and a half stories, or so that the vertical distance measured from the highest point of the roof that the mean pre-construction grade exceeds 35 feet.
Yeah, so it's the mean pre-construction.
It says whichever is less. So what I would have to do is. Says whichever is less, so what I would have to do is probably.
Oh, whichever is less.
So in your example, Sandy, zero and ten, the mean would be.
Five.
Five, and so you'd be thirty-five feet from that five-foot point.
Exactly.
Except the whichever is less.
I would, I would write a section, so that's the height requirements. And then they have like another section for the LCD where you have additional, different requirements. I would write a third section for the downtown district, whether it's Harbor's Edge, Town Center, or both. So, and that would, the language would be different.
I'd go with probably zero to ten, five in the middle.
In our simple solution, yeah. If it's mean and it's a lot of variety, you'd have to figure it out.
So is the consensus other than being thirty-eight in the B in the Harbor's Edge?
Yes.
Yeah, and would we allow three stories in the A instead of two and a half?
I'm not comfortable with.
But that's two and a half, the difference between two and a half and three is just.
A half-story.
Well, a half-story means with a man's side roof, you're just taking a little angle and having dormers. You just have more comfortable living space on that third floor. You're not, you're not adding units.
You're not adding to the total height either.
Not adding to the total height.
Since it's a smaller-scale buildings in that district.
Wait a minute, Chris.
Probably wouldn't need a fourteen-foot first floor.
So let me be sure I understand what you're saying. So you're saying, um, make it three stories rather than two and a half, but keep the absolute measurement at thirty-five? Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think.
That allows flexibility, which is fine.
Something's wrong with that formula. You're actually getting less.
Less?
But thirty-five feet is staying.
Thirty-five feet doesn't change, yeah.
Yeah, as long as thirty-five feet stays.
Does the language right now say two and a half stories or thirty-five?
Yeah, it says two and a half stories. And so people get around.
Throughout town.
Yeah.
There's actually definitions of that half-story, there's a certain amount, that half-story you can use for residential.
That would certainly create a little more clarity between two and a half stories.
People have a lot of ways around this.
So rather folks want to do, so thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight in B.
Yep, and how many stories in B?
Three.
Do we need to define it?
Or just leave it at thirty-eight?
Or just leave it at the height and leave it at the three?
Yeah.
Of course, this building's going to be.
I'll write a new section.
This building's going to be way taller from the front. It'll be forty-three.
So, so what about A?
If, if currently the zoning says two and a half or thirty-five, I'm, I'm fine with saying up to three and thirty-five.
I mean, unless I'm missing something, that's not really changing.
Right.
Anything.
Well, as long as there are design considerations, because you don't want to have big blocky things.
You don't love the flat.
Right.
Right, but we're going to have design control.
Does changing from two and a half to three potentially open up some negative concern there when it might not be necessary because of the height staying the same? Would it makes, I mean, could, does it, does it make sense to even change that? Or we just, is that necessary to have there any, can we just have the height at thirty-five? Or is we need to define?
Oh, what a story is?
What a story, yeah.
Right, make it thirty-five feet to leave it.
Well, why do we, why don't we just say it could be any number of stories, but it can't be more than thirty-five?
That's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is there, is there?
It says no.
Change the language to get rid of the two and a half, you're saying?
Unless that's, is there a reason to keep that?
I don't know.
If we didn't have design standards, I would be concerned about it because of the blocky construction. But if we have design standards and they're part of it, then.
What if, what if you had a building, this would maybe be a follow-up question with all the building inspector, a building that had multiple like levels, like you had a nineteen-fifties, sixties house that's got, I've owned a couple of those.
The split level?
Yeah, well, I had like five, five, five different levels on, but it was a low house.
Yeah.
The whole, total height of the house was more than, I don't know, probably twenty-five feet.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, because it was a basement level and then a grade level at the lower end and then another level and then one above the other level, so it wasn't very tall.
Yeah, I lived in this place.
They had lower ceilings, you know, probably.
Well, I, I guess.
That, is that a six-story building? A five-story.
I think that's why, yeah, I don't know why stories are important. Who cares?
But they are clearly because it's that way consistently throughout the town. So it's not like each zoning district has different stories. They all look the same except for the LCD.
Why define the stories? What you're really interested in is the thirty-five foot height limit.
Well, there must be.
Well, I think I would say, because the town zoning had no design criteria previously, the two and a half stories was a, was a design control effectively. So you wind up with mansards, you wind up with dormers to get that extra space on the third story. And if we're having design controls that are more complete as opposed to the two and a half stories, which is an oblique design control, maybe, you know, it's fine to do, not mention stories. And give the flexibility to the owner of the property. But without design controls, I would leave the two and a half. All right, so what do we want to do?
So including the number of stories in zoning language is important for maintaining neighborhood character, protecting public health, safety, and managing it.
Right, actually, we have definitions of stories in our zoning bylaw.
Oh, gosh.
So a story is that portion of a building contained between any floor and the floor or roof next above it does not include either the lowest portion so contained. More than one-half of such portion vertically is below the mean finished grade of the ground adjoining each building.
Of course.
Portion so contained if it's under a sloping roof. And then there's a definition of a half a story.
So do we need to change all that?
Yeah, if we just eliminate.
I just feel like right now, let's not mess with the story.
How about, how about a note for later?
Note for later.
Yeah. Delete the story.
A half a story is interesting. It's a floor level with a roof above, the area of which at a height of four feet above this floor level does not exceed two-thirds of the floor level immediately below it.
That's a math problem.
Now, how we enforce this, I have no idea.
I bet it's not enforced. You made things that are, okay.
All right, so I think we have some agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So Peter was nice enough to remind me that I skipped over area district, the residential density. So we should discuss that issue.
Well, let me throw out a number, fifteen units an acre.
So that's what Sarah had talked about last time. How is that going to play out?
I, I think you don't talk about it that way. You talk about what the minimum lot size is, which is six thousand square feet. And an acre is, what is it? It's forty-three thousand five hundred and eighty. Yep, square feet. So that's, you can get seven point something, seven and a half, I guess. A six thousand square feet lots out of a one acre. And you multiply seven times two-family, which is currently permitted, and you get fourteen or fifteen. And that, so it's basically the same as what there is. So I think that's the argument for it.
You can't get seven lots out of where acre.
Oh, sure you can.
But no, because they won't have the front edge on the.
Ah, well, there's that. Yeah, that depends on the shape. But I think you can make an argument that from a density point of view, it's.
You could get no more than seventy lots.
So do we want to change the language that, Mark, where is this in our proposed language, our draft?
For, is the last page eight point five point three, is that?
Against the. Yes, the last page.
Yes.
Eight point five point three.
All right, Rob goes, obviously, going to change that thirty-five to thirty-eight. So Sandy, how do we phrase that so that we're not talking about fifteen units per acre?
No, I don't have the language.
There you go. I can put it up on the screen.
I did notice in Kathy's comments, I don't know if people had a chance, but what the thing is on. She talked about.
You might, you might have a comma, but I don't, you know, there's, there's marketing and explanatory language and then there's the law. Which is different. So that, I mean, what you would want to say here is mixed-use Harbor's Edge allowed at a density of fifteen units per acre, comma, this roughly the same as the density that's currently allowed in the general.
So the comment that Kathy included was that, it was unclear if it preferred to residential units.
Ah.
And she thought that we needed to specify, is it a combination? And I don't think it's meant to be a combination. So what are we trying to achieve there?
Ah, that's a really good question.
It should say residential. And that was the whole point of the fifteen unit acre was for residential units. How they divided the first floor, whether it was one big, let's say, store or one big, you know, retail, uh, uh, sales office for, for a real estate broker or something like that, or whether it's broken up into multiple gift shops, doesn't really matter. I mean, we're really looking at fifteen units an acre was for the residential component. And so we, we talked about using that because that's a, a number that we had to comply with for MBTA zoning. It's an acceptable number, it's reported as, for that number for our other districts. It is right in transit, kind of falls in line with a lot of those things. And since we're requiring it on stories, it seemed to, to be a good.
But if we're combining that, if it's mixed use, so some of it's commercial units, and so you can't just say residential is allowed at fifteen units an acre because.
One in?
Well, because you're winding up with a much denser, bigger building.
You've got your commercial space and then.
But there are other controls. There's going to be parking requirements. I mean, if fifteen.
Coverage requirements.
Fifteen units in an acre is going to require, uh, six thousand square feet for parking on the ground.
But you know.
You've got a lot of coverage issues and height and.
Well, but wait a second. So in the B district, help me out here. So in the B district, my understanding is we're saying no residential on the first floor, correct? None, nowhere.
Yeah.
But then the standard that we're using is fifteen units residential units. So it, there's kind of a disconnect here, it seems to me.
Why is there a disconnect?
Because the whole first floor must be, we're requiring the whole first floor must be.
But we're also not increasing the height by one or two stories.
But then, so why are we saying density of fifteen residential units? Because it's not realistic, because it's.
Because you're losing a whole story there.
Right.
So you may not get fifteen units.
But we won't get that, right?
Well, you don't know. I mean, if someone builds one-bedroom units, someone builds one-bedroom units, they'll easily be able to get fifteen units an acre. If they build three-bedroom luxury units with the living rooms and kitchens and dining rooms this size, they're not going to get that number of units.
Mark, what's the square?
That's a, that's a marketing, the market conditions is what developers say all the time. Market conditions will determine whatever gets built there at some point in the future.
Well, how, can you give us a figure for what a, like, average, uh, single-family, not single-family, I beg your pardon, as one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment unit?
Six hundred for one-bedroom, twelve hundred for two-bedroom.
Six hundred square feet only for one-bedroom? Wow, that's pretty tiny.
I saw one for three hundred and fifty square feet. I think it was in Manchester.
No, yeah.
Sold for like five hundred recently.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
And we want smaller units, right?
Yes, we do. I do anyways, so.
So if you reduce the density below fifteen, you're going to get bigger units?
That might be a great location to do more smaller units because of the transit. In the center of town, you're older, you don't want to drive anywhere.
And it's fifteen units per acre? Well, I mean, you could. I mean, six, a six hundred square foot unit, if you have fifteen of them, the total number, total square footage is nine thousand square feet.
Oh, precious.
Out of an acre.
Probably twelve thousand when you include certain.
Right, all those, right.
Well, do we need to incorporate any of Kathy's comments about making it clear?
Yes, I think it's a good question.
How do we want to do that?
I think you just add the word residential after fifteen. That make sense?
I think so.
And then we have to change the thirty-five feet to thirty-eight.
All right, onward, minimum depth of the commercial space. So we have this, they show currently at twenty-five, is that correct?
No, what your commercial spaces are in the, for the, what is it, the copper kettle?
We were looking at that.
Yeah, we went right there and he gave us a measurement, then it was eighteen feet.
Yeah, it was less than twenty-five.
It was eighteen for the retail portion of it? Is there a backspace associated with it? Storage or whatever?
I don't know.
It doesn't say, it just says commercial space.
That could be true.
I thought we had this somewhere.
Okay, but in the, in the copper kettle place, is there a back?
Copper shed.
Copper shed, thank you. I'm not a shopper.
You're going to do it on the next one, I bet.
You gotta go.
Maybe not. So, um, the eighteen feet is the place where the customers are and the goods are. But is there a place behind there where inventory is? But is there a place behind there where inventory is kept?
No, no. Probably underneath.
There's a tiny closet, the bed sheet, really, the space is all retail with a tiny.
It's all customer-facing space?
Yes, yeah. There's, there's no.
Where they keep their stuff?
Door and one of them.
Ah, in their cars. But, Mark, where is it in our draft?
Oh, I think it's one of the notes.
Do you want a minimum?
No, that's a good question. Leave it up to the person who builds the building.
For residential. Yeah, it's on, it's on the page seven of the draft. Note sixteen.
Oh, there, okay. Oh, there, there it is. So the, when touring the corner of school in.
Central.
Central.
Yeah.
It was much less than twenty-five. So we thought we might want to reduce that a little.
By twenty feet?
I'm fine with twenty. Mark, what do you think about twenty?
Did you, did you say that someone told you that it was eighteen feet or you walked it off, or how did you?
And flung me it was there.
It was there. Oh, good. All right, perfect. No, that's great. Yep.
How does twenty sound?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, affordable housing, nine point four point one. So the thought is, so how, how to incorporate that, Mark? Are you pulling that from?
I was trying to pull something also. Um, what are we doing now? Sorry. I was trying to find, uh, find a plan online and I.
Um, so we're talking about the affordable housing requirement.
Yes.
And we were going to incorporate the language.
So that is the last, from the last page, the last section. The affordable housing requirement in the harbor's edge. Does the affordable housing requirement subject to nine point four point ten of this zoning bylaw shall apply to mixed-use developments in the harbor's edge? So that is the affordable housing section in the, uh, the, MBTA.
The same language.
So it's the one and five?
Yes.
Yeah, twenty percent.
Yes. We good with that?
Yeah, I think so. Makes sense.
All right, ADUs. So we kind of have the, uh, the side note here because we've got the letter from the HE's office and it's hard to understand.
It is.
But I think what it says, and this is without input from town council yet. And we haven't had a chance to, uh, get answers from them. But it seems like for our large ADU, we're fine. And they say we approve the amendments under Article Nine. That's our large ADU. They didn't say, oh, but we don't approve this or strike that.
And that's the one that requires a special permit?
Yes, yes. But for Article Eight, which is our standard ADU, they say partially approved with a few exceptions. So they say we have to strike the word permanent from the requirement that AD, ADs be installed on a permanent foundation. So this takeout is permanent, and we can't have, uh, mobile home prohibition. If we take out mobile home from that section also.
It was added at the town meeting. I seem to remember some discussion that they were.
It maybe was.
That I think somebody.
Was mobile home? Yeah.
I think there was some discussion there from.
And it turns out mobile home is not a defined thing.
Good memory.
That's right.
So those are gone, permanent and mobile home. And, but the thing that we did want was they struck our six-month lease minimum. Um, and there was quite a bit of discussion on that at a town meeting also. But they say that inflicts with the inclusion of the reference to the short-term rental provision, and we can't be in conflict with that. But we can prohibit short-term rentals in the ADUs, which is thirty-one days or less. And I think we put that in in addition in both Articles Eight and Nine. So I think we're okay on not having short-term rentals in either the small or large. But again, we need to get that clarified by town council.
But no short-term rentals is per the current definition of thirty-one days or less.
Exactly. So, but we need to get all of that. So, uh, oh, and there was one other thing. I'm sorry. In our standard ADU, we had said to apply the same dimensional standards for setbacks. And we had said same setback as the primary building, and they said, no, we can't do that because you have to use the most permissive, permissive dimensional standard in your zone. So that would be the.
Accessory.
Right, the, the setback for accessory. So that may be changed.
One thing I want to note, they did say we could, um, limit, uh, ADUs to single fa, single ownership.
Yes.
Condos, we can, are prohibited, prohibition of condos is upheld.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion about that at the meeting.
And they, and their argument was if you had a condo, it wouldn't be accessory anymore.
Right, right. Uh-huh. So it has to be a rental unit?
No, it can, yeah, yeah, it has to be a rental unit.
Yeah, yeah. Or, you know. Yeah, an in-law who's not being a renter, Mark.
Right, exactly.
Um, and so before I forget, I'm on the, I'm our liaison to the zoning board of appeals and the next meeting, November eighteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. There's going to be an ADU application before the ZBA for a home on Norwood Avenue that wants to build an ADU, and the parents are going to move into the ADU, and the kids are going to take over the house. So that should be, um, a great discussion to. That's just what we want.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a little problem with that.
Well, it'll be good discussion then.
It'll be a good discussion.
It's November eighteenth.
Yeah, it's in the D one district in which you prohibitively use over the nine hundred square feet because you can do two families in that district. And so this is in the D one district, and their little building is about a thousand fifty.
So if they connected that, this.
So they have two options. They can connect it to the primary building or, and then they could do it, or they could, uh, shrink it and size a little bit to be nine hundred square.
Right, easy.
Okay, sorry, when's the date of the hearing?
I just looked at that application today, and so I've got to call them tomorrow and see what they want.
Okay.
Okay, so in terms of ADUs for our table with this proposed downtown zone, what do we need to do now?
Uh, I will, um, now strike the old ADU requirements. We had a line item in here on page four, E six. So that, that line will be removed, and I think we deleted the employee housing one.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
So those two will be deleted, and I will add what was included in the, by new bylaws for, and then I will put those into these districts. So you need to kind of give me an idea of, so in the, obviously, in the town center district, the answer would be no and no, because you're not allowing that.
Single family.
Yeah.
Or is that in both?
In both. No single family in either district means no ADUs.
Yeah. Okay.
But that's fine because they can just build.
They can build multiple.
Okay. Design standards.
Yes.
Yes, do it. We put them out there.
That is the top of the last page.
Okay. Great, and we refer to the child design, would you standard, or if it's in the storage district, it's their review.
Okay.
Great. Everyone good with that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, um, I think, is there anything else in the draft, Mark, that we haven't talked about that is a change from our last discussion?
Well, the change from the last discussion are the items in red.
Right.
And so those are the names of the districts. Well, and she'll be erected, except on a lot. Ron Keen was speaking. I think we changed that language with why it's red.
Right.
I think we made any changes, the uses. Yes, we did. We made two little changes to the uses on page four, which were tennis courts or sports courts and swimming pools. Do not allow those in the town center district.
Right.
And, um, we added home occupations to the harbor edge districts. We now allow housing there. Added a couple notes for mixed use without first floor residential. Those numbers seventeen and eighteen. So, where we made it by right in the town center district. The note seventeen limits that to four units, and in the harbor's edge district, it's a planning board special permit. And the subject to the note makes it subject to the requirements at the end, which are the affordable housing requirements and the density. Actually, it should be, should be, um, should be all the requirements of eight point five. Because it also should be the design review.
Don't make that.
Yeah, I'll just say eight point five. And, um, so the only question I had was that is do you still want to, so mixed use without first floor residential? The harbor's edge district, you still want that to be a planning board special permit?
Mixed use without resident. Oh, I mean, it makes basically commercial.
Commercial on the first floor and then residential above. Should that be?
By right?
By right.
We had a.
That's what you're trying, that's what you're trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Acquire, right? Yeah.
Why would you not do it?
Is there a reason?
Not necessarily. If, if the only, the only reason is, I mean, perhaps would be it's a special permit, so you have the ability to say no, and you may have some slightly larger scale development.
Given the size of the parcel.
Given with some of the size of the parcels, but, I mean, the likelihood is, you know, small, and you have so many protections in your site plan review requirements and design requirements and everything else that I don't know if it's necessary.
So you would say site plan review, but not, not a special permit?
Well, it would be site.
It would be anyway.
It would be anyway. So what I'm saying is you have a lot of protection.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't have the ability to kind of say, well, it's not the best interest of the district. But you have all these other things in place. So I think that's why I'm questioning whether it's really necessary to have a special permit for, for that.
The, the only reason I would argue that you might want a special permit, and I think I disagree. I'm not sure what I think about it, but just for the sake of argument, is that, uh, that district, district borders on a, a certain kind of residential district. And so you might want the discretion and the control, at least initially, over the details of any more control than you would have with just site plan review.
I would argue that you probably have enough control on your site plan review. I mean, requiring a bigger setback or as long as you can justify your reasoning for, uh, having them modify a design, a height in a certain location. That's a part of purpose of site plan. So.
So with the site plan review, though, you can't say no?
No.
Where do you put conditions on it?
You.
Put conditions.
Which hopefully are enforceable.
I don't know. Hate to give up control.
Yeah. It, it's also.
That about matches.
I think if the parcel weren't so huge and it didn't border the A district, I might feel a little bit differently, but I don't know. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, something to, I thought I threw it out there, that's all.
Yes.
Yeah, launch it and see what happens.
Yes, so that, use the forum to bounce that up. So wait, so we're leaving it a special permit or we're leaving it by right?
I'd say by right, and then.
And see what people say.
Yeah.
And then we can go back to a special permit.
Hotels.
All right, hotels.
As, um, the other changes we already discussed. Here are the notes. Some of the other.
I guess before we get to hotels, should we, um, I don't know if folks had a chance to look at Kathy's comments, Mark, this afternoon, that's when we receive them. If not, we can, um, just go through them quickly? What do you think?
Yeah, um, most of them are, so, so. Yeah, um, most of them are, so, so a couple of them have to do with the, um, on the first page, uh, number two and number three really have to do with our existing language and we already decided we weren't changing the language of some of the uses at this point. And one of whom we just discussed, which was mixed use as right.
Oh, you.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll run through it quick.
Okay.
So the first, uh, first part had to do with the intent. Um, that's really just an intro, it's not even part of the bylaw, so I. So.
Well, I think her, the discussion about the street side frontage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what about that?
Yes, um, insert street side frontage at the end, so that it really occupy at a minimum. Street side frontage, I mean, I think that makes sense because some of the buildings have, are turned sideways in particular.
Oh, right, yes.
Someone might interpret that as frontage, really mean the street side frontage. Um, so that's, that's a suggestion I would definitely incorporate. Um, the next one has to do with changing the existing language of one of the uses as does the next one, and we kind of already talked about not doing that at this point.
Okay.
We would do a subsequent cleanup of certain languages at some future meeting.
Right, we can't just do it in this one.
That's the same with page three, too.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, we just talked about at the top of the second page, um.
Yep.
Number eight, we already just talked about some mixed uses of right and um.
We don't need to define a per district.
Yeah.
That's clear in my thought, I mean.
Right, so it's always been kind of interpreted that way anyways, um. I didn't quite read this last.
We already discussed on page eight.
Mm-hmm.
Six point one, did we have?
Oh, yeah, and then second one is residential units. Next one had to do with height, so we've kind of already gone through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where the fourteen feet.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yep.
Okay, good.
And a comment on the map is she misread the map, so we already have that, those parcels on there.
Thank you. All right, hotels.
Can we call it inns instead of hotels?
That was, that's what I thought, but Mark has an answer for that.
Our bylaw already defines hotels and the definition of hotels is very clear that it doesn't include inns. There's a building or any part of a building containing rooming units without individual cooking facilities for transient occupancy and having a common entrance or entrances. A hotel may include a restaurant, bar, tavern, or accessory recreation facilities. It does not include a motel, boarding house, lodging house, or a rooming house. Those are separately defined. So, um.
Something we're kind of stuck with though.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, just to add to our.
I know.
Messaging.
I know.
Are those, uh, are town definitions or those state definitions?
Town definitions.
No, no.
Is there any limit on size, Mark, in that?
No.
There is, because you got all these.
Other things.
Things, yeah.
Right. Oh, well, maybe we could say, we could suggest a number of rooms, small hotel.
Yeah, yeah, I, for inns or small hotels, I don't know, can't we?
But an inn falls under that definition.
Is that a special, does that require a special permit?
No, it's a by right.
In what, in the general district?
No, in the um downtown, oh, so I wrote this one, we only had one district, so I would allow it by right in both downtown districts.
Can we allow in the LCD as well?
That's, that's, that's what I have proposed as well.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Do we want it by right, though? But we have other restrictions, we shouldn't like this.
I think we have the design controls.
Okay.
Just, if somebody were to want to put a hundred and fifty room hotel in next to the train station, what would we do about that?
They can't do that because we need a space for gastro.
Yeah, I guess it'd be.
Plus the other businesses.
Yeah, the limiting factors.
Yeah.
Other limiting factor, okay.
Good. Okay, we already talked about communication plan, but um since we don't have another planning board meeting before the eighth, that would be great if we could have another working group, um, if anybody is available. Um, you know, it's hard to pick a date when everybody's available. Sarah suggested Halloween, Thursday, because she's available that day.
Fridays are very.
Okay, okay, um, so what?
Thursday.
What would folks?
Can we do it next week?
Yeah, can you say next week?
Oh, next week.
The week of the third.
Later in the afternoon.
Stay afternoon.
At four.
It's fine.
Well, Brian has. When is Friday?
Um, nineteenth, but you know, who knows?
Who knows?
You're going to have to excuse. Remember I said the fourth?
Sure, what time?
I don't.
Yeah, I can't do anything until four fifteen, election day.
Oh.
I'm gonna say five o'clock.
That'd be.
Is that too late?
Uh, four thirty.
Four thirty.
Yes, that allows your seven o'clock.
That's fine, no, four thirty's fine, I can get there by four thirty.
Four thirty on the fifth. And, um, Mark, can you get us a room?
Yep, we will get that posted.
Thank you, oh, right, thank you.
That too.
Um, I did send everybody a sort, uh, which I hope you received because I'm still a rookie user of the system.
Yeah.
The latest round incorporating one of your comments.
In the FAQs.
Yes, yeah.
There's Peter's name.
It's still, they're still pretty rough, but I think we've got most of the questions that we can come up with anyway.
How did you send them around?
I sent them through the, um.
An email? Okay.
Through the town email.
Got it.
But I was a little puzzled by the town email, so I just wanted to be sure it arrived.
Yes, it did.
And for the working group, I think it would be really helpful, um, Sarah, I think I passed out a, um, general points that Sarah prepared because I should have sent this to you, but I just, I didn't have internet last week because they're jackhammering on Forest Street and I went through the cable. They fixed it by Friday morning, but then I had to go out of town, so anyway, I'm sorry that I didn't send these to you. Uh, but anyway, Sarah did a rough outline of things to think about for the forum, and one of the ideas is to think about specific, um, properties that we would stand in front of and talk about, this is how it will apply to this building.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
So think about which buildings you think need to be mentioned and what we need to mention about them. That would be great.
Okay.
And then the other thought that I had to think about is, um, we're gonna try and go in groups. And so, Mark, you're gonna be there, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have eight people if everyone can come. Um, so that could be four groups of two, or we could do three groups, two groups of three and one of two. Um, so think about what we think might work best, um.
What time does that start on the?
I don't know, um. Ten.
Ten o'clock?
Yeah.
I know we've been talking about that, but I'm remembering the very first forum we did, and it was everybody all together, I mean, it was this amount of people moving around and because there was a large number of people, we picked up people as we went along, we were like, what's going on here? And it also meant that everybody, there was certainty about everybody getting the same story, I mean, we kind of.
It was an issue, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we also moved, individuals moved amongst the crowd and responded to individuals in a way, so, and then collected back, I don't know, I think it, I think for the first one, it might be good to do it just everybody together.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we found when we did the one where we invited all the boards, that it straggled down into.
That's true, we did.
Into multiple little groups and talking things.
And those are the.
And that's why we had talked about doing, extending out three or four little groups of two people, that's why we talked about maybe doing a message about where to stop, so we talk about the same things, sure, the people give us different feedback, but at least if we stop at the same four or five spots and mention, well, this building couldn't be built today, but we like it, this is why we want to allow it to be rebuilt, or this building we don't like, it was rebuilt, we'd want it to look like something else, so, um.
I don't know, I mean, I think the boards, people on the boards tended to talk to each other, you know, the people they usually talk to, and it, that's why it straggled around, but the citizens really, when it was aimed at just the residents, people tended to.
You know, it's gonna depend how many people show up.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, how many people, there were forty, there were forty people, forty, fifty people who showed up.
Yeah, that may not happen on the eighth of November, but.
Also, yeah.
I think we should be prepared to break up into groups.
Yeah. Think about it. Okay.
And when are we gonna get the FAQs done, that the working group, we're gonna publish these?
Um, Sandy and Brian have been working on those.
And Chris.
And, okay, and Chris.
Yeah, so then, and Peter's added some comments to it, too, so, I mean, everybody should take a look and come with comments about the FAQ.
Okay.
And we want to put, we want to have those for the forum to hand out to people or not?
Boy, it would be great if we could, I don't know if we can, I mean, let's see how far we get.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I really think we ought to have a map to hand out.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to have this big packet of zoning changes.
No, 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 no.
They want to, but if they have a map in one hand and they have the FAQs, we can make copies and have, you know, forty copies available.
Yeah.
On the Saturday, we can get it up on, I'm sorry, yep, on the.
Yeah, the map is, yeah.
So let's, can we finalize it on the, this at the working group?
Yeah, let's, let's try and do that, at least something to, I mean, we can always change it.
Yeah.
My gosh, it changed a bunch of times, I mean, I'm comfortable enough that we've got the spectrum of things, the first round, of course, anyway.
And I think some questions will come out of that forum, too.
Absolutely, it's gonna grow.
Okay, senior housing, um, so Mark sent around assignments, okay, to everybody to look at certain towns, I just looked at mine today, I'm not really prepared, I have an offer detailed comparison between Wenham and here, but a couple interesting things jumped out, one is that they have two separate districts, one is called senior, they're overlays, one is a senior housing overlay, and the other is an independent living overlay, and they're different, and, um, they require large pieces of land.
Yes.
Um.
I love, did it specify?
Yeah, it's a seven acres, yeah, yeah.
It's hard to come by here.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if other people have had a chance.
Yeah, so, and I did North Reading, and they too acquired four acres, and they had it, they did it via a senior housing overlay district. And I think this will be consistent across all of them, but there's an age restriction to have to be fifty-five or older, just get that out there. Um, let's see.
So all of us, we have Brian.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So other, special permit for senior housing developments issued through their planning board, which would likely be the way we did it, too. Mixed use is allowed as long as planning board deems them compatible. Um, and a lot of discussion about dimensions, density, design regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, four acres, two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, site coverage, no more than forty percent, minimum open space twenty percent, I mean, it's just, uh, within two hundred and fifty feet of a park, a common or a library, so the seniors can walk to any of those, and not more than fifty units, and each dwelling is not more than two bedrooms. Um, there was a really interesting concept they had in here, and they called it their local preference plan, and I don't know whether we've ever done anything like that, if that sounds familiar to anybody.
Yeah, that's.
Have you, have you heard about that, Mark? Yeah, I mean, Chris, sorry, that as part of the special permitting process, the applicant should submit a local preference plan for review by the planning commission with input from the public, from the slide board. Uh, the plan may provide that before new market rate units are sold to the general public, the following persons who will be allowed an opportunity to contract with the developer to purchase a market rate unit, current or former residents of the town, employees of the town, and a parent, child, or sibling of a resident of the town. So that is interesting. Um, onsite amenities are mandatory, and the parking was one point seven five units per dwelling.
One point seven, oh, that's crazy, for senior housing.
Yeah, and then affordable housing, uh, had to be fifteen percent in perpetuity.
So I looked at Westboro, and Westboro was interesting, they also had overlay district for senior housing, almost no rules about anything. And they have three, I, I went and checked to see how many actually got built, three of them got built, and because the district, the overlay district is small, they're all within a couple of blocks of each other, which I think is a problem, I think we want it spread out.
Yeah.
Um, and they're all huge sites and they all had, you know, hundreds of units.
Yeah.
So you gotta be careful what you ask for, you know.
Which town?
Westboro.
Oh, yeah, I've been to, oh, to those, yeah.
Um, I, I did Harvard, and I didn't, you know, read it as carefully as I would like to, uh, but they did something that I thought was very, I mean, the purpose and intent statement was terrific, I think everybody would agree with it here, um, but they did something very interesting about, um, constraining the development. So they talked about there would be a maximum number of senior housing units and that in the town.
In the town.
And that would be, uh, and, and the way they did it, I thought, was quite interesting, instead of setting a flat number, they set a number that was a percentage of the total unit, housing unit in town. So it floats. Um, so that was interesting, and then they had something that actually appeared somewhat to contradict that.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't understand how this.
Some unusual ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just in this, and it, you know, they tried to control the pace of development. So, um, they said you can only approve a hundred units per year.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what.
Right, at the same time, and then, but wait a second, and then they went, but no more than thirty may be permitted, I mean, the language is just flat out self contradictory. So, but that's, that's one way to.
Subsequent group.
To do it, but I think that's maybe a little bit too much control, and then they did do, and this is the thing that I've sort of been wrestling with, is that, uh. that they defined senior residential development height. And they talked about ADUs, assisted living facilities, and continuing care, retirement communities. And they're all, you know, more specified, other than the ADU and...
Not sure how ADU would be senior housing.
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, there's some funky things.
So, I looked at Littleton. What I liked is, they had a nice continuum of air, and they defined from small cottages to retirement communities. So, a diversity of senior housing options, universal design requirements, and they defined sites being near transit or walkable neighborhoods, accessibility options. And what I thought was interesting was the affordability mechanism, 50% affordability requirement, which is extremely high.
Wow, that's high.
Harvard was 20%.
Can be adjusted down to 25% by the planning board.
Is that BA affordable? Not Little A affordable?
What do you mean by that?
I mean, Little A means, means it's cheap for a market rate without having all the affordability requirements on it.
It's, I think they looked at 60% AMI or something like that. It was, I mean, it was, yeah, it was pretty shocking. And then the planning board would be able, it would go through a special permit, all the senior housing special permit, but the planning board could adjust that down to 25%. Minimum two-acre lot sizes, and open space preservation, height, density controls.
So, I glanced at all of them, and I tried to put together the issues.
You've gotta finish mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you'd never done it.
I'm dying over here. I'm gonna cry. I wanna see it live. So, I did, thank you, Chris, appreciate that. Well, I did Hamilton. Hamilton, very, I've been listening to what the other towns require, and I can almost pick out certain things from all of them. But they are very, very controlled enough. Planning board is dictate, they're, they're the agency that controls everything. And they had a similar to what you just said, Sandy, your maximum of 100 senior living, senior housing units may be permitted, town-wide. Hundred, a maximum of 50 dwelling units per project shall be allowed, and maximum, you don't need to read that much. They had, they had quite a diverse stock of architectural style that they allowed, too. With Brian, with that, single-family, two-family, semi-adapt, three-family, four-family towerhouse, and so on, all the way down the line, with the different types of houses that they had. They had, they had a density requirement. And they have, this is, this is what I thought was very interesting, and they are, they are very particular of where the buildings are built. So, if you're building a development, you can't have another senior housing development within certain distance of it, because they don't want it to have it all combined, to be a senior living neighborhood. So, they were very responsible, were responsible, or at least cognizant of it. And I asked Chris about this table. This is a table here, they actually encourage developers to densify, if you will, their, their senior housing. So, they'll give you, they'll give you credit if you follow certain guidelines, whereas you're allowed to have, senior housing density is four per developable acre. Then if you, they give you certain criteria. If you wanna follow that criteria, you can actually put six per developable acre. So, they are, they're almost encouraging it to get more developmental area. And I thought that was kind of interesting, the way they did it. It's difficult to figure out how to read this, the machinations of how to get there, but the bottom line is, they tell you, you can have four. If you do nothing, and if you do something, you can have six, and so on, right down the line. Thought that was kind of good. One thing I, I couldn't quite get, they did talk about these as condominiums or market rate, or, almost as if they were saleable, and these are not affordable, not BA affordable. They have, they have a whole different criteria for affordable housing in the town. They actually have a different name, too. So, I thought it was kind of interesting. So, this is the criteria, senior housing, oh, location of a waste disposal per site, you can't feed it to the central system, you have to keep it all on-site. Very interesting. They have an HOA and condominium documents for these things. So, my guess, this is, and it's in multiple districts. You could be in the business district, or the three residential zones, as they cry. You could have it in any one of those things.
In all of those zones, even there?
Even right here, yeah. You could have them downtown. And they all have different criteria for as far as setback and everything, and density of it. So, they, my overall reading of it, I got the sense that they encourage this and would encourage this thing. If you live within the guidelines that they've established, it could where and what, they could, where they could be, and what they look like, and where it goes. And there's no expansion required. You can't, yeah, once you've built it, that's it. You know, you can't go back and build it again. Well, that was very controlled, very controlled, much like Chris.
You and Sandy provided some images up there.
Yeah, what you get when you do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
And the units, by the way, are two-bedroom units, that's it.
Wenham or Hamilton?
Hamilton.
Hamilton, okay, because the ones who looked at were Wenham. So, I've come up with, I kind of glanced at all of them, but then read Westboro carefully. I tried to see if there was something we could pull out of all this. And so, the first thing I realized was that we should, that zoning should be performance-based and not prescriptive. The more definitive you try to say unit sizes, heights, all this stuff, the more specific you get, the less likely anything's gonna be built, because it's just too difficult to...
Yeah, too tight.
What we're really interested in is, is how these things perform, not what they exactly are designed to be. And in our case, our special permit process already has a performance criteria built in, and we already say it's gotta conform to the neighborhood, and gotta be utilities, and all these things are already specified. So, we shouldn't complicate things by duplicating them again in this, or in contradicting them either, if we're comfortable with the performance standards that we have. The second thing is, do we want an overlay district to do this? And if not, what districts do we think are reasonable? And the next is a minimum lot size? Do we want a minimum lot size? And if so, what does that accomplish? And it'll accomplish one thing. If we say 10 acres, we're gonna get a big goddamn CCRC. If we say one acre, we're gonna get smaller-scale things. So...
Could be better.
Need to think about that. Density, do we want limited density? And again, I would suggest maybe we go into 15 units per acre is reasonable starting place. I mean, I personally don't think we should have a density requirement at all, but...
At least the 15 is consistent, right?
At least it would be consistent.
Chris, how big would those units be if they were 15 per acre?
How big would they be?
How big would the living units be?
Well, so, that's another, that's the next thing, is, do we want to say they can only be two bedrooms or less? You want to say there only could be, you know, 600 square feet for a one-bedroom, and 900 square feet for two?
That's a prescriptive side, again.
That's very prescriptive.
Some of the luxury units can offset the affordable.
Well, yeah, so, one of the, we could say is that, do we want 25%, no more than 25%? Could be three bedrooms, that might be a way around that. So, that's something you gotta think about. We want to keep the same dimensional district, dimensional requirements for the district applied to the senior housing, height, lot coverage, trying to argue it be consistent as well. Inclusionary zoning, so I thought about this quite a bit.
Yeah, that's the term they use for affordable housing.
So, that means 25% or 20% affordable. The problem I have with that is that, that cost is borne by all the other seniors living. And so, that's, why should they pay the price for, so I wonder if we would consider maybe allowing increased density for affordable units?
Similar to the, the schedule that Hamilton has there.
They encourage, they encourage...
You get 25% more.
Less built area and more congested area.
And do we allow more height in that case, too? Give them an extra story to do affordable units. So, that's something to think about. One thing often these things say is that the bedroom has to be on the same level as the, as the living spaces. But that seems prescriptive, again, although, I guess it would be stupid if somebody like, like our public housing does, have people living on the second floor, they have to walk up.
You couldn't.
But you'd think that the market would say if you're...
Right.
I don't know, that's just... And then the local preference, which I think might be a good idea, but you might say that 25% of the units have to be per local. So, that's what I got out of this.
So, Chris, something like Hamilton would be too restrictive.
Yeah, I think if you start saying, "It's gonna be this and this," and if we want these things built, and it seems to be what people want, the more difficult you make it, unless you're gonna...
Does Hamilton have any of these already?
No.
Oh, really?
They had one that was gonna go on Shebaco Road. There was a big fight about it, and they cut it, pulled.
Isn't that still ongoing?
No, I don't think so.
I thought I heard it came back into the...
Maybe, I don't, I don't think...
I think there's another developer that moved in there with 40 B for...
Something, there was something.
So, the thing get around.
Yeah.
I think their problem was, what was it, that thick or something? I mean, the original one.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think this, this developer using 40 B.
Well, there you go. At least not using their pilot order.
So, maybe, next time, we could think about just a couple of the issues, like lot size, and, you know, do we want it in every district?
Yeah.
You know, just a couple of things like that.
Yeah, I think reasonable, say, an acre might be reasonable, but that means that you're gonna get 15 units of a minimal size, and maybe that's too big, maybe we should say half an acre or something.
Is it the Maples? That's that 55 plus? Is that Wenham, too?
That's Wenham.
I thought it was Hamilton, okay. All right. Right on 1A, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Chris, what did they do, what did they have for parking?
Well, they have, it looks like about one space per unit.
This is, this is two spaces.
Two is ridiculous. We don't even do that for single-family houses there.
Okay, we'll think about that, too. Lot size, districts, parking.
So, what, what is our hope and plan with that, with this senior housing zoning, whatever article? Are we still hoping to get that?
Yeah, I hope, I hope.
In April?
We'll see.
Okay.
I mean, our, our downtown takes preference, but if we can keep plugging along with this too, great.
That was a good exercise, though, because that'll help me better look at our, the one that you wrote up, Chris, so, to make sure it's not too prescriptive.
So, on the agenda was minutes. The only minutes are from our working group, and only the people who came to the working group can vote on them. So, Brian, me, Chris...
Congratulations.
Sarah. You weren't there. Yeah, okay. So, they're pretty quick.
All right, please, that be approved.
Second.
Oh, I'm going to...
Second, sorry.
Okay, all in favor? All right, great, pass those. That's the October 17th. I'm not sure if you have those, Kendall, but I'm, I'll make sure you do. Okay, public comment on any of this. I should have taken them after each topic. I apologize for not hearing that. Mark, get hands.
Well, there's only four people up there, so, it's...
I wonder who is Peter, was Peter?
Peter, any comments?
No, I've been on all the comments.
I do have a VA's all report from Open Space and Rec. Okay, so, the discussion, and I missed the first part, so, fill in, Mark, please, was about the Gordon Woods and the reluctance of Gordon College to really engage with the town before they got further along. And they have a developer, Jefferson Apartment Group, and apparently there was some large piece of equipment, an excavator out there fairly recent, and people were trying to figure out, what was that all about? What did it mean, going back into the woods?
I know, they're doing their due diligence.
Oh, yeah, was that into some of the trails? And I'd heard some of the bike community, yeah. Yeah. They were one of them, what the heck was getting torn up?
What's going on, right?
Looking for hazardous materials.
You think?
And this is all landed on by Gordon, right?
Yes.
Anything else?
I do have a layout, keep it, keep it in mind.
Okay, okay.
You don't have to take notes here. So, the, the facilities committee has turned into a serious committee we meet every week now.
Oh, wow.
Because I miss it, we kick away from that thing. It's narrowing down as to what to do with police, fire, and with public works, which obviously involves sites that we may be interested in upon, that everybody's interested in on Hudson Street. And they, we're now getting a consultant to start to help with us with test fits and plans, and probably an economic study at a very high level, determine which is the preferential site for which use. No decisions have been made, but clearly there are obvious choices to be made in here. So, if we have anything to say about it, if you have anything to say about anything, it's now's the time.
Well, what is that process, though? Does the town have input? What input does the town residents have?
Starting right now, we're gonna have a communications plan being developed. We're gonna do the pros and cons, each site, potential uses, who needs what, the sites available, how each, each site would play a part for what particular use, come up with the pros, cons, opportunities, and constraints like that. And then we'll go to the town, like, here's what we found out today, and looking for your input, and your thoughts are.
And then it eventually goes to town meeting.
Eventually, then it goes in front of John, and Kathy's with us all the time, so we're... It's a pretty rigorous process. This is exactly the same process that we're doing for Essex Elementary School, same thing, same timing, but it's just doing what we're doing. Town will be in big, God, cage, comments will be asked, issues will be raised, what about, what about, what about, and those will all be taken into account. So, it's a, it's a big deal, because there's, there's a definite need. If I took you for a tour of the facility, too, you'd be wondering how we're moving now.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
Oh, no.
I move to not let Gordon speak anymore.
I feel like a spy. I'm spying everybody's interest, and I get to talk about everything.
I do not say that.
No, I'm just kidding.
I'm gonna invite you to this.
He may suggest he has a substitute, not watching.
That's my move, Lee, I'm sure.
All in favor? Great, thank you so much.
So, I'm gonna make a great job, Sandy.